Now in session, the Honorable Chad Williams will give the invocation and introduce a special guest for the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. God, thank you for the many blessings you've given to our county. Especially thank you for keeping us as safe as you could during this recent crisis and storm. Please be with us tonight as we do our best to take those gifts and use them to your best judgment. Amen.
Amen.
That wore me out. There's some young Marines that could help me lead the pledge for me. Very good. We don't want to hurt you wherever you want to go.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the best pledge of allegiance we've done in quite a long time. As I call your name, if you'd come forward for oath of office. Alicia Moldrow, Patricia Myers, Sonya Burris, Penny Shepherd, Ed Stewart, Jeff Lyon, Ed Lindsay, Carrie Tilly.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. You do know what you're getting into.
We had three people sign up for appearances. So when I call you four, just remember to give your name and address. And I can give you up to two minutes, then I have to shut you down for the next person. So no more than two minutes. First person is Natasha McNeil. Welcome. I've got some special thing going on out there.
Oh, yeah. Hello, my name is Natasha McNeil. I'm the founder of York County Fashion Week. I addressed you all a few months back, and I just wanted to come in and say thank you so much for the opportunity to have a proclamation proclaiming York County Fashion Week as our official week in October, October the 2nd through the 7th. Let me back up my address, just in case you need that. It's 4146 Thomas S. Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I brought together our team today, and several of them were combating the traffic, but we just really wanted to be present so that we could express our gratitude to county council and just let you all know that we truly appreciate your diligence in assisting us with making this a legitimate York County Fashion Week. One of the things, if you did not get to hear me address the council, is our Fashion Week is an indication and a reflection of who we are here in our county. We are bringing together 40 designers and boutiques. And pretty much it serves as a platform for them to get their brands in front of the consumers that are local as well as those that are traveling. It's an opportunity for us to get behind these boutiques and retailers as we know the immense growth that's happening here in our county. It's also just an opportunity for us to showcase, you know, a high caliber event in our county for individuals to attend and have a good time, as well as emphasize fashion. And I said this last time, whether you're on the negative or positive side of the spectrum, we all have a fashion sense because we have to wear clothing, right? Yes. And so with that being said, we just wanted to express our sincere gratitude. Please check us out, yorkcountyfashionweek.com. And I think that we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get on into the agenda. Thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is, I believe that's Jordan Blankley. It's not Blakely, is it? Blankley? Jordan? Jordan and Julian. So if y'all want to speak together, I give you four minutes total.
We're 모스 for York County Fashion Week, and we just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this.
Absolutely. Do you want to speak too? Neither? Both of you?
We were just going to say that.
Okay. Okay. Well, next item on the agenda, do we have a motion for consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Next item. Let me turn the pages here. Okay, we have a public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider an application for a public service use for a field borrow source for the construction of Pennies for Progress Project 11149002, Highway 274, Pole Branch Road widening. The use is to be located on parcel number 46900009 in the Clover community. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Of a motion?
Move to close.
I saw a hand over here, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry? Yeah. So you're speaking in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity, first of all.
Absolutely.
David Allardyce, project manager for Blythe Development on the Pennies for Progress project. I just wanted to let you guys know that this source of material is crucial for the success of this job. We contracted with Mr. Barfield in good faith, and I think that, and I think that, do we not get this material brought to the site, it will cause a significant delay to a York County project. In addition, a tangible aspect to this is moving forward for other jobs. If we're going to restrict the use of land, and this is under the classification of mining, I'm not entirely sure that, I mean, I think we all have a different idea of what mining is. If we restrict the use of borrow material locally, it's going to increase the cost to the county 30, 40, maybe 50 percent to bring material in from other areas. So I'd just like for that to be a consideration as you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Was there somebody else? Yes, sir. You're four, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Alan Barfield with Barfield Greagan Company in Fort Mill. I'm going to kind of repeat the same thing he says. The dirty issue in York County has gotten serious. Any job we go on, we got to have borrow material. Any job, like, we got four or five jobs right now that need dirt. And there's no sources of dirt that we can go get immediately to do jobs unless they're 30, 40 miles out. And some places further than that. So going forward, you need to kind of look at some easy places to get some dirt and ease up some, like agriculture, industrial areas for dirt pit. It don't have to be a mining operation like a rock quarry. Getting dirt and pit gravel is a different application, operation than getting a mining, actually a rock quarry, you do blasting and all. But you only look at this going forward, there's no dirt sources in Fort Mill whatsoever to get dirt. Corthop's out of dirt. There's no other dirt in Fort Mill. If y'all got jobs coming up in Fort Mill, there's no dirt. So just kind of keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those favor say aye. Those no, do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
This is not in my district, but Councilwoman Love had asked me to make sure that everybody understood that this was to haul out dirt, not to bring substances in. This was not going to become a dumping ground. This was simply a haul dirt out, which is necessary in order to complete Pole Branch Road.
Anybody else question the motion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Next item, counsel to hold a public hearing and approve third reading authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and among Lindy Hydraulics Corporation, formerly known as Project Elixir, East Group Properties LP, formerly known as Project Elixir Developer, collectively the companies in York County, South Carolina, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the companies providing for payment by the companies of certain fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits in connection with such agreement, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other miners related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Greg Litten. I work for Lindy Hydraulics Corporation.
Give your address. Your address.
My address is 5089 West Western Reserve Road, Cantfield, Ohio.
Yes, sir.
I've been working on this project now for two years. I've looked at four sites, well, five sites actually, if you count North Carolina, Houston, Texas, Chicago, Illinois, up around Youngstown, Ohio, and right across the border in North Carolina and here in South Carolina. And through the great people you guys have, David Swinson, who I first met down here. I really appreciate all the help and guidance that they gave me and the tours around the community of Rock Hill and surrounding areas. And we chose, we chose Rock Hill because of many, many different things, but one of them definitely was the incentive packages that were available to us compared to some of the other locales.
I appreciate you bringing the jobs here.
No problem. Yeah, we will be hiring about one a month through next year, through the end of next year. So we thank you guys very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else for?
Move to close.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Need a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Next item. Counsel to hold a public hearing and give third reading of an ordinance authorizing the county sale of its building, former Fort Mill magistrate building located at 114 Spring Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, described as a certain piece of property containing 15,375 square feet, .0353 of an acre, more or less, and all improvements their own, sold as is and identified by tax map number 0200424001 to formalize the sale to the successful high bidder to York County request for proposal number 25397918 in the amount of $400,000 to authorize the chairman to execute the deed in furtherance of the sale to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other miners related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? Against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, we need a new motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Next item. Jim Cummings, representative, to present the construction update.
Good evening and thank you. It's kind of appropriate that we're doing this quarterly report today, especially after the weather that we've recently had. We, Kelly Clayton and myself, we were talking about pulling all the information of what the actual impact was. We did spend a good bit of time prepping on all the sites. Erosion is a very important item, issue, I should say. We did, part of our design, we did design for larger than the minimum event, deheck required event. I'm happy to say we had no off-site impacts, and we had between six inches and 6.7 inches on these sites, which is a lot of rain. I don't know exactly, but it's more than a hundred-year event, less than a thousand-year event. But having said that, if you would, turn to tab section one. Now, I'll begin the quarterly update with Moss Justice, which is our most difficult project. There we go. So we've got two phases. Phase one, if, just to bring you up to speed, was the parking deck and the on-site parking. This is what we're calling Building One, which is part of Phase Two, and this is Building Two. This is judicial, the sheriff's. So I'll talk to you about those in those orders. So Building One is dried in. It's an important phase for us. It's when, really, when you can kind of start hammering away with interior finishes. The brick and exterior glazing is, I'm not going to say 100%, but I would say 99%. Relatively speaking, it is complete. Drywall, which is one of the major items of moving forward. You don't want to get a whole lot of sheet rock if the building's not dried in. You don't want to get wet and mold and whatnot. Finishes such as ceramic tile, ceiling grid are ongoing in Building One as well. HVAC has been started, another phase where you start dry the building out and really are allowed to get the moisture down in the building to allow you to kind of adhere to the masonry and concrete surfaces. Building Two, which is the sheriff's, is a little bit behind. This started before this one. But relatively speaking, we're close. This photo was seven days ago. We still have masonry, but we're close to being dried in. Should be, reach that milestone next week. Drywall is underway. We do, most of our finestration is locked down. Our windows are in place and doors are in place. And then overhead M and P is underway. Next step after we get those rough ends, then we'll get ceiling grid and start working our way out of the building. Once we get that, those two buildings complete, we'll be able to move functions from the existing buildings into the new buildings and start the renovation, which that part honestly is going to be the most painful part. We're in good shape overall on the project, schedule-wise and budget-wise. I've got several photos. Be more than happy to entertain any questions while I'm spinning through them.
How many cars is that parking deck?
It was designed for 300, but I think we're 311? So I think it's 311. So to be, and that includes the handicap spaces. And then we had an additional several hundred on the front. So when it's all said and done, we have more than what we started with, obviously. This is an interior shot of the corridor, ceiling frame and drywall. Fairly common. Interior finishes, ceramic tile and restrooms. Exterior of Building Two, almost complete. Again, these are kind of typical conditions of these spaces. Any questions with Moss Justice? Family court, we had 6.7 inches of rain. That's the most of all the projects this weekend. It's, although it doesn't really impact a lot of the critical path. It did, the soil was already really saturated, and so it kind of slows progress. I'm not going to say it's really impacted anything, but it has slowed. There is one impact. I'll talk about it on another project. The structural steel has been erected. The concrete slabs are all complete except for a little part on the backside above the detention area. We got to pour the cell caps before we can pour that. Masonry is underway. Metal stud framing, interiors, metal stud framing is underway. So that building is moving forward. It is several weeks behind schedule. We have had some issues with metal erection, steel erection. We've had some issues with personnel, and we've had some issues with weather. But we have requested and received a, what we call a recovery schedule. We're implementing that recovery schedule, which means that contractor is going to have to maintain and make up the lost time. So right now, we're, our makeup schedule is on, per the March 16th, excuse me, the March 2019 completion date, substantial completion date. We have several photos here as well. Again, just general exterior masonry and structural steel, interior slabs, masonry shafts, and then lower level. Fire spraying, all the steel there has to be fire sprayed before you wrap it. So project is on schedule with the recovery. Our next project is the Government Center. We had six inches of rain here. We did have some water that infiltrated through some openings at the bottom. We did not have any coming through the roof or the walls, but we did have some where a window was left open. Actually, it was in the council chambers area. Nothing significant.
That didn't happen on purpose.
Building is dried in, reasonably speaking. If you keep the windows open, I mean, keep the windows closed, we're dried in. Permanent power has been turned on. That's another major milestone. The building is running on its own power instead of temporary. HVAC units have been started, again, pulling moisture out so we can start the finishes, which are also underway. That building is really going well. We're expected to have it completed in mid to late December. So really short order, that building will be complete and turned over. Now, that's just one of the phases of a difficult project process because we will, parking is still, I mean...
Tell me, I'm going to get to have a meeting in there, so we aren't still on schedule for that?
I'll defer to administration on that. But we're tracking to have the building complete in mid-December. So how fast we can move in and get populated. But, you know, our next step will be finishing the parking lot, tearing down the, this facility, and then paving. So while we're in that process, a two, three-month process, it's going to be parking, which is, right now, kind of difficult. Will be more difficult, but it'll open back up significantly once we get the surface completed. It's an exterior shot. A lot of glazing, a lot of masonry is complete. It's, in my opinion, a very attractive building. This, that's over the portico, a roof overlooking, you can see the ag building. Interior, fairly typical status, ceiling grid, doing some painting, block fill, or I should say priming, ceramic tile and restrooms. Overall, the project's going very well. The next project that we'll discuss is Public Works. Project is broken down into several phases. Being, you have to, we had to build this building, which was the equipment maintenance building, which was housed here. We had to complete it before we could demo that and put the equipment storage, vehicle storage. Same thing here. We did an addition. That was part of the phase with this project before we moved in and did renovation. So where we are with that is Building A and C are complete, and, A and C, and they're under, they both were completed in May. May 30th and May 4th, respectively. We're really working hot and heavy here. We should have that project completed. The 25th is when we have our final inspection scheduled, which will remain, which will leave the equipment storage building. And there, we, the building is erected. We're working on, masonry is complete, but we're working on M and P rough ends and other types of rough ends. Final stage will be site paving, and that project will be complete. On budget, on schedule as well. We're projecting about, to finish around $200,000 under budget here. This, this is the project I was talking about earlier that actually did have some impact with our schedule. We were set up to do some paving. Obviously, it's not going to happen this week. So we're going to have to kind of dress up the final grade and then set up stone and move forward. So not a major, but it did push us on final completion, which was scheduled for the 10th until the 25th. Interior of the road maintenance. Road maintenance. It's the locker room floor to the building maintenance. And then we have, our final project is, will be the last time we report on it, and that is the recycling center. We received our final completes, excuse me, our substantial completion in May. And the equipment has been installed. They're coming back this month to do their commissioning on the equipment. We had two different packages. We bid out the bidding, the building, and bid out the equipment separately. Able to realize a good bit of savings by doing that. We, and we're projecting about $350,000 to be under budget on this project when it's complete. So once these projects are complete, we're still here for a year. Matter of fact, we will be doing the one-year walkthrough of the magistrate office in Fort Mill. And that's kind of the warranty period we walk through, make sure that, you know, kind of point out, try to make a list of things that, during normal wear and tear, that they get addressed before the warranty expires. Tab section two is our schedule. We're actually, the red line is March, but we're actually in September. If you follow the line down to September on your page, everything here is accurate, and we're happy with the condition of the schedule and budget of our projects. That concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Next order of business is counsel to approve adopting a proclamation proclaiming the week of October 23rd to 31st as Red Ribbon Week. This involves the Young Marine program. So I'll tell you what, can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. So before, yes, sir?
I think, while we're having a discussion, I think part of the process, I think David wanted to come up and say something about red ribbon.
Okay. Absolutely.
Good evening. We're the Mecklenburg County Young Marines. We currently service about five counties. We have four young Marines that live within York County in our program, who are here tonight. I'll let them introduce themselves in a minute. Red Ribbon Week is a very important part of our program. It's when we try to get out and bring awareness about illicit drug use and the dangers thereof. Year-round, we constantly give our Young Marines classes about different types of drugs, how it affects the body, the legal ramifications of using it, just to teach them to be aware so they can live a good, healthy, drug-free lifestyle.
My name is Young Marine Lance Corporal Vance. I've been in the unit for five years now. I personally really like the program. I like what it does, how it's trying to change youth drug abuse.
My name is Young Marine Corporal Van Leeuwen. I have personally made many different presentations about different kinds of drugs that are around, how to avoid them, what to notice, and like, teaching people about them. The best part about this program is we can teach kids from the youngest age of eight to 18, everything that Young Marines is about. Not doing drugs, leadership, all these different things. It's really a great program. And we have some stuff that we want to hand out to you.
Absolutely. Chad?
Thank you.
Can you read that proclamation? You got it?
I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah?
Yeah, I got it.
I appreciate what you guys doing.
Sorry.
Thank you.
He's a short time of really long.
Thank you.
We do have a motion.
Yep, we do.
I'm going to let you read it.
Hope I can say the word.
Good thing you hit it. Thank you. Appreciate it, gentlemen. So we're going to have Mr. Williams read the proclamation, then we'll vote.
Yeah. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines or the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week in York County, South Carolina, and urge all citizens to join in this special observance.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Question on the motion, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to adopt a proclamation recognizing October second through seventh as York County Fashion Week. So if we could have a motion and a second first?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I'm gonna let you read them.
Okay, all right. Did you guys want to say something else before we read it again?
Sure, we'll take a brief moment for everyone else to introduce themselves.
Hello, how are you? My name's Brittany Walker. I'm a events director with York County Fashion Week, born and raised in Fort Mill, South Carolina.
Hi, I'm Jordan Blankley. I'm a model for the York County Fashion Week. I'm from York, South Carolina, I go to York Comprehensive High School, and you can see me walk in the VIP and red carpet shows on October the third and the fifth.
Hi, I'm Gillian Blankley. I'm twelve years old, and I'm from York, South Carolina, and I go to York Middle. And I, you can see me at the York, not the York, I'm the Kensington Showcase, yeah.
Hello, how are you all? My name is Michelle A. Washington. I'm actually one of the model coaches, and I'm training over two hundred-plus models at York County Fashion Week. I graduated from Camden High. I'm not from York County, but I'm accustomed to it.
I'll let Mr. Roddy read the proclamation.
All right. It reads, whereas fashion plays an increasingly important role in our world today, and whereas